Feel like something really big is about to happen. I'm waiting for it. I'm like, oh wait, that's me just starting to talk.
Um, I don't, I don't see the agenda on the chat. Um, do you remember what day you sent it by email?
Um, this weekend, but I'll just. Actually, I can send it to everyone in wire on the committee chat.
Yeah, I think if you join after it's posted.
Like, oh, wait, that's me just starting to talk. Oh, okay. Hold on one second. We're live.
I don't see the agenda on the chat.
I'm gonna send it to you, Janine.
Do you remember what day you sent it?
Oh, okay. Sorry, everyone. I did not mute my YouTube. So I was hearing myself and everyone else twice and was basically having a conversation by myself. Anyways, hi, thank you for joining us today. I am Jessica Levesque. I'm the Executive Director at C4. And today we're going to be talking about the CBP. Um, we've got our committee members here joining us. And we also have our community coordinator Lisa. So Lisa, do you want to say wave hello? And then I think you just did. And then why don't we all just introduce ourselves? So Dirk, do you want to start? I can't hear you.
I could probably unmute myself if I'm gonna talk. That helps. It works better that way. Um, I'm Dirk Anderson. I am the Committee Chair. Um, and uh, I am also the Chief Technology Officer at Salt Blockchain, Salt Lending, um, where we do crypto backed loans. Um, and I wore my T-shirt today. You can't see it, but I wore my, wear more with C4 T-shirt just for you, Jessica.
I know, I forgot to wear mine. I should have. I'm proud of you, though. All right, Rodney, you want to say hello?
Uh, sure. My name is Rodney McInnes. I am the COO and AML Compliance Ninja at Outlier Compliance Group. And I wore my shirt today.
Very nice. I like it. Peter, you want to go next?
Hi, hi, I'm Peter Work. Um, having some computer issues to hopefully everybody can hear me. I have my own training company in the blockchain, uh, blockchain space. And I'm also the Chief Compliance Officer for a large cryptocurrency trading platform.
Thank you, Peter. Janine?
Hi, I'm Janine. I'm an independent investigative journalist and privacy researcher. I'm currently a privacy researcher at CASA.
Cool, thank you. Um, Hunter Albright is also a committee member, but he wasn't able to join us today. Um, so Hunter's a professor at, what university is he at? Colorado? Oh, you're muted again, Dirk.
I'm just gonna leave myself unmuted. Um, he's at the University of Colorado Boulder and he teaches both uh, in the business and engineering schools there around blockchain.
Yes. So we have a great committee that has worked really hard to update the CBP exam this year. And then also to create a CBP prep course and prep book. Um, so one of the updates I wanted to just share with everyone to start was about the exam being translated. So we use a platform called CrowdQ, which we're going to be talking about more later. But we've added a new function to it, which is being able to translate the exams into other languages. And so the first exam that we did this for was the CBP and it's been translated into Spanish. And it should be coming out, I'm hoping, in either the next couple of weeks or beginning of 2022. So the exam questions have all been translated by members of the community from English into Spanish. The study guide has been translated and along with all of the content needed to begin to take the CBP exam. So that's, we're going to do a separate page on the website, like a separate tab for Spanish. So because only the CBP has been translated, we'll just have a page about the CBP in Spanish on the website. And then we also have the prep book translated as well. Um, so one final person is copy editing that this week. And actually, someone else just told me about a mistake in the English version. So we'll be updating both of those. And then we'll be getting that up on the website, which we're really excited about because the community has told us often that there's not enough resources in Spanish and that a lot of people who speak Spanish and not English want to take the CBP. So I'm really excited to make this happen, make it a reality, so we can get more people certified in the space. Um, anybody have any questions, thoughts on that? I'm checking the chat in YouTube as well. Seems like we've got at least a couple CBPs who've joined us today.
Awesome.
One of them who's a CBP is De Genius. I like your screen name. Um, okay, so let's do the next update. Um, well, so this is the first time, I believe, that the CBP committee has gone, done a livestream. Is that true?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we know our friends on the CEP have, but uh, this is our first time.
Yeah, the, so the CEP Committee, the Certified Ethereum Professional Committee, has been having, um, you know, office hours or a livestream for the past few months. And so we're going to hopefully start doing more of this for the CBP as well. So what we generally do is some updates and then go through exam questions or kind of whatever the community is asking us to do. So I think we're gonna be doing more of this in 2022 as well, so that people who want to study with us or have questions about the exam can do so. Um, in terms of studying, so we obviously can do more trivia sessions and whatnot in 2022. And this year was pretty big for us, getting the course out and the prep book in English and now hopefully in Spanish soon. Um, but I also wanted to talk about how the CBP course has been moved to a second platform. So for, when did this, the course came out in March, I believe? Um, was it March, something like that? I'm not sure. It was sort of a blur of like all the videos and everything. But so it came out and it's been up on Udemy since then. And we, it, the platform itself works really great and we've got really good reviews. We've got like four and a half star reviews and over, I think, 200 people have taken the course and um, are now CBPs. So in terms of like the course itself working on the platform, it's been great. The reason that we have decided to add the CBP course on a second platform is because we didn't have as many capabilities within the Udemy platform to do things like add coupons or um, basically coupons. That was the biggest issue. So if we want to be able to say like, oh, here's five free exam or five free CBP course coupons. We couldn't do that before. And so we've moved it over. So it's also on a site called Thinkific. And we'll be giving some coupon codes for that course out. But it's the same content that everyone on the CBP committee filmed themselves or did voiceovers for. And so same course, just on another platform.
No need to take the course on both.
Yeah, yep. And then once more people take the course on Thinkific, we will start to advertise that on Twitter and our socials. The reason it's still, we're still like connecting to Udemy on socials and on our website is because we don't, not enough people have taken the course yet for us to feel confident that it's like smooth and there's nothing, you know, no issues in there. Um, of course, if somebody does sign up for it, we think it's fine. But you know, after you've been involved in something for so long, it's like hard to see through it. And so, and I honestly couldn't watch myself on the videos for another second after working with all the editing. So, but it's a good course. People like it and it's helpful. So I just want to let you guys all know that it's on this other platform. Um, okay, then this is what I think is equally as exciting as the Spanish Translation Project, which is CrowdQ. And that is one of the things that we have been working on for quite a while. But we're now at the point where we're ready to start to roll this out to have more community involvement. So I do want to show what CrowdQ looks like to everybody. Um, has everyone on, everyone on the committee has access to CrowdQ? Has everyone on the committee used it um, before? And do you have any comments about it while I um, figure out how to present this on my screen?
I just, uh, you know, I'll just say that this was kind of one of the, um, the, the very first conversations uh, that we had when the committee was formed. And one of the focuses has been around the idea of getting um, uh, cryptocurrency Bitcoin in particular, right? I mean, a huge chunk of what makes it so amazing is the decentralization. And um, we are, you know, C4 is a training thing. We're not, uh, we're, we're here to educate folks and help people learn, um, not to, to make money. Um, and so uh, one of the things that we've wanted to do since the beginning is actually get better community involvement in this and, and get uh, get more people helping out in um, uh, you know, what's important and what matters. And, and of course also, right, I mean, there's always new bips. Things are always changing. Um, uh, there's uh, um, uh, just, you know, a, a constant state of change around crypto in general. And so having additional people be able to provide their input and recommendations and ideas for, for the exam and stuff is, is something we've always thought would be super valuable.
I remember, I remember seeing it at the conference in Denver and thinking like, wow, what a cool idea. That would be so neat. It would provide such valuable feedback as far as creating new questions. And like to Jessica's point, when you're in it all day, every day and doing this from month on end, um, you kind of lose sight of the bigger picture. Uh, so having fresh faces come in and be like, hey, you, you maybe want to, you know, ask a little more on this topic or you completely missed this little subset of another topic. Um, I think that could add tremendous value, not only from an education perspective, but just like a knowledge perspective.
And, and also to, you know, help refine the existing questions, right? So, you know, because we would never ask a question and have an answer that was wrong. That would never possibly happen. Um, but uh, but certainly, you know, uh, hey, you know, this question would be more accurate or more precise if it said this.
Yeah, for sure. Like even though we're a group of people, it doesn't mean, and there's more than one of us to review things. We're obviously not perfect and not, oh, sorry, I'm showing my, the wrong screen. Um, you got to see us all twice. Yay. Um, but so we really want to make sure that other people are asking questions as well. Because, you know, one of, one of the reasons that the people who are on the committee are on the committee is because you all are part of the industry and have a lot of knowledge and, you know, kind of have your ear to the ground on what's happening. But there's so many things that are happening um, in all different aspects of the industry that it is really hard to keep up with everything. And so um, the, the CBP is a little easier to do that than the Ethereum exam. But still, you know, things change and we want to make sure that we keep up with it. And so that's why we review it. But so here is what the CrowdQ platform looks like from our side. So if you are on the um, study guide on our website, you will see that the exam itself is set up in the same way that the study guide is. Meaning the history of money is first. And then there's questions on centralized ledgers, functions of currency. And I'm not going to show you all of those because that's the exam. But all the questions are in here within these different pieces. And so that's, you know, we're able to decide how many questions from each section and all of that. So this is what we use as a committee to be able to add questions, make comments. Um, the CEP Committee created the entire CEP exam in CrowdQ. We didn't have this when the CBP was created. And we didn't use it to the degree that I think we're going to in the future for updating and making changes to it. But we're now at a point where I'll be able to show you how collaboration questions work. So anyone will be able to come in, and by anyone, I mean anybody who is a CBP who has been given access to CrowdQ. And so our hope is as we keep moving this forward, every CBP will have access to this. Um, we just have to make sure we've got all the details ironed out. So anybody have a new collaboration question they want to ask? There might be one in the um, chat. Let's see if anybody's asked anything so far. No. Anybody on the committee have a question you've been just dying to put in this?
Put us on the spot.
Okay, I'll just make something up. So we could just say like, what is the CBP? Okay, so you can see here that we've got the ability to toggle between Spanish and English. I won't even attempt to put Spanish in here because it won't go well. Um, but you can say, you know, what is the CBP? And then scroll down and you're able to add question choices to it. Um, and actually, the way this is set up right now, hold on. Huh, I don't see, this isn't going very well because I don't see the, oh wait, here we go. Multiple answers. So you can add that in and then you're able to add in the different questions or the different answers. Once you've submitted something, it then goes to the quest, the questions then added. Of course, I did this earlier and it was fine. And now that we're live, it's not working.
Curse of a live demo.
I know, of course, it's not what always happens. But anyways, it, the, what you can see from this, I hope still, is that it now has the capability to add questions collaboratively. And then people are able to go through and they, if it's approved, it becomes an approved question. Again, I'm not going to show you that. That gets moved into the um, quiz or into the exam. So we're also have the ability on it to make, people can make comments. So if somebody from the community is like, oh, we need to put this BIP in there. Other people can then respond with their comments on whether or not they think it should be included, should the question be rephrased? And then the committee reviews the questions and either rejects it and suggests that there needs to be changes to it or approves it. And then that question is added to the CBP exam moving forward. So that's what that looks like. Um, the reason that we have Lisa here today is just, I wanted you guys to be able to see a face with the name to know that she is the person behind this project and is going to be instrumental in making sure that this is really something that we use. It's a tool we have, but we haven't had the opportunity to use it the way that we can. And, you know, as a nonprofit, we need all the help we can get. And there are so many people in the community who actually want to help. We get emails from people asking to help. We just haven't had it set up so that people can help. So we're excited for this to be something that will provide more access to people who are interested in helping. But also, it's going to make the exam a lot better. Because right now, it's been created by this, you know, small group. The, the committee, the people here are the ones who reviewed it and gone through and added and made changes. And I think it's a really good exam, but there are also a lot of different, you know, ideas out there that we don't have in because it's been, you know, kept pretty small between.
It's limited to a handful of biases, right? So we all have the things that, you know, that brought us to uh, to Bitcoin, brought us to crypto, um, that interest us, that intrigue us, whether those are social things or in my case, the cryptography, right? You know, the, the, and so we all come at it from our own focus. And when there's only a handful of us, then you only get a handful of focuses around the, the questions going into it as well, even when we try to intentionally, you know, broaden our horizons. So um, having, having a lot of other participation will really, like you said, just make it a better exam and a more comprehensive exam.
Yeah, for sure. I'm trying to think, like, when we went through and revised this whole thing, we were, for the CBP, we were still working in, within the spreadsheet itself that we had prior with all of the questions listed. Janine, I remember you and I, I can picture where I was sitting when you and I were going through, like question after question together. I think we were on a call trying to figure it out and it was just like, there are so many questions in it to then try to, like, to then wrap your head around it and be like, wait, did we ask this already? Cause.
Yeah, and it doesn't help that I hate spreadsheets in general.
Well, we did it. Um, and so, yeah, the, the whole, you know, committee was working through this spreadsheet, making changes. And then that spreadsheet was uploaded to CrowdQ. And now that it's in CrowdQ and there's kind of like the subject dividers, the, the different domains and topics, it makes it a lot easier for us to review what's in there, but also for people to be able to add stuff to it. Because it can be like, okay, I want to add this. This is where, if somebody proposes a question and it's accepted, it's easy for us to see not only where it fits into the exam, but what needs to be added to both, well, to all three things. The study guide, the course, and to the um, prep book as well. So um, yeah, that's, that's about that for CrowdQ. Um, Lisa, I know you um, need to jump off. You're already a CBP, so you don't need the educational piece. But thank you for joining us. I'm glad that everyone got to see who you are and um, get an idea of your behind the scenes work.
All right, thanks, guys. Bye.
Thank you.
Yeah, Lisa.
So Dirk, you brought something up that I think might be kind of fun. If, and anybody who doesn't want to can be like, no, count me out. But I think it'd be fun to say how we all got into the industry. Because like, we've all been around for, you know, kind of a while. And I think it's fascinating to hear how people like got interested in crypto or Bitcoin. Does anybody want to share?
Well, I mean, I'm happy to, right? Like I mentioned, right, you know, I've always been fascinated with cryptography. I spent uh, almost 20 years doing information security um, consulting um, and uh, um, helping build a, a big information security and compliance company. And but cryptography was always just kind of one of the things that was my, my area of specialty and that has always intrigued me. I'm not a cryptographer. I always tell people this, right? I'm not, uh, don't, don't ask my wife about my math skills, right? But um, uh, I am, uh, but I have always been intrigued by it. Uh, and so um, you know, that was really one of the things that drew me into it was this is the coolest practical use of cryptography out there, right? I mean, yeah, sure, you know, shopping securely is fine. But uh, but, but that's just, you know, that's just not the same as kind of this uh, um, unique application of, of the cryptographic uh, elements that make blockchain possible.
And I love that you understand all of this um, because I am such a newbie to the technology in that sense that like, especially with the course and all the help you did with the images and graphics, trying to make sure that it actually was accurate. Dirk was just a huge help.
Yeah, it was fun.
Okay. Rodney, were you gonna jump in?
Sure, uh, mine was um, a kind of funny, kind of sad. Um, we had a client reach out back in 2013 to say, hey, can you update our risk assessment to include Bitcoin? Uh, my business partner Amber was like, yes, I've, I've heard about this thing before, but don't really know anything about it. Um, would you pay our retainer in Bitcoin so that we could kind of learn and, and figure out how it works? He was like, no problem. Uh, take the weekend and do a little bit of learning, figure out how to secure a wallet, back it up, blah, blah, blah. Um, Amber disappeared for a whole weekend and came out routinely every now and then with like, this is so cool, and was just super excited. Um, she used that Bitcoin to buy um, like for myself, a tablet because she had to, she had to use it. So she wanted to buy something. So I got Bitcoin tablet, um, or tablet that was paid for with Bitcoin. Uh, promptly left it on a plane about a month later. Um, that now would be a very high quality, high value uh, tablet. But it was really neat to, to see how it works. Then we started going.
Most expensive tablet ever.
It's up there. Um, but it, like, the learning experience was invaluable. Um, the, the fun part of my story is then we started going to the meetups in Toronto. And uh, it was, it was very early. It was probably the second or third meetup that we ever went to. And we left and she's, she's excited and like, ready to like, go out and do something really cool. And said to me, what did you think? Like, did you have fun? And I was like, I was angry. I was like, no, that was stupid. I don't understand anything about economy. I don't even know what the word cryptography means. I, and like, just complain, complain, complain. And she looked at me and was like, so do something about it. And I wanted to yell and be mad, but I couldn't. She was right. I had to, I had to spend the time um, and learn about it. And so I spent the, not a short amount of time, pretty heads down, trying to, to sort my way through it. Um, huge shout out to Andreas because his book was incredibly helpful in that pursuit of knowledge. Um, and now I sit on a committee that writes questions about this stuff. So it, it's, it's a reminder that, you know, we all start from the same point. This is not common knowledge that everyone has, for the most part. I'm sure there's exceptions. Um, but there is definitely a learning curve. So don't feel too defeated if you hear this stuff and it sounds like a foreign language. It is.
Yeah, I agree. And I feel like the learning curve is really steep. And so like, you know, mastering Bitcoin is great. There's a lot of resources. One of the things that I think is very difficult, not just in terms of like understanding it, but then to be capable of taking that understanding and putting it into a format to teach others and to ask questions that make sense. And so um, Janine, writing the script for the um, course and the book and just like the way your brain worked to put it all together still just fascinates me. And I'm so impressed because the content for it and putting it all in there and making sure that everything's explained, not only explained, but like it's in an order where, because you have to keep going back, right? So it's like you introduce something to be able to introduce something, to be able to introduce something. And then you have to sort of circle back to the start of that in order to explain what you were talking about to start. I don't know if it makes sense how I explained that. Um, but yeah, Janine.
Uh, maybe, maybe I'll go. Um, I, I, I've been trying to think how I've got into, when I got into. I think it was around 2012 or 13, actually. And myself and a couple of other people in the banks, mainly a guy called Joe Moring, um, started to see talk around Bitcoin in particular and had an interest in, in learning more. And I think Joe actually first made contact with Mike Perklin and Josh and connected with them at an early stage. And, and they really helped us to start to understand it. Um, explained things to us. Um, again, at an early stage, we, I think we got ourselves invited to the first um, Bitcoin or blockchain conference held in Toronto. Uh, we were there on stage from the, an anti-money laundering capacity. Um, thereafter, we put on another one ourselves and brought in law enforcement. Um, the Blockchain Alliance, I think we brought in and, and other big players. And like everybody else, probably I bought the book, Andreas's book. Uh, I've just ordered the, the Lightning Network one. Uh, just learned more and more. Um, we, pretty early stage, uh, reached out to do my CBP to help me understand more. And then very quickly wrote a, a study guide for the, put 150 people through the CBP actually on the back of it, which you've seen, of course. Uh, and since then, it's just gone from strength to strength. In 2018, I was at the point I could resign from, or retire from the bank, should I say. Um, started my own company. Um, quickly was offered the CCO job with Bitfulx. And the rest is history.
Yeah, Peter, I also, I didn't point out, but when we were starting to figure out how the course would work. And so we, we started the course and then went and did the book. But yeah, I remember that, that study guide that you had, which was sort of like the informal um, detailed study guide for um, the CBP exam. That was pretty important to getting a lot of the early people into the CBP and to be able to understand what they needed to know to take it. It's interesting how it like all comes together and there's so much, I almost forget like where we started with everything. But now that you mention it, I'm like, oh, that's right. I do remember looking at that and using it.
I actually, I actually wrote it for myself, uh, to give myself the knowledge, to put myself through the exam and then pass it on.
Right, because the original study guide, study guide, was just a list of topics, right? It was a list of topics. The things that you should like know about. It didn't have the explanation of those things or what you should know. It just said you should know about these things. And yeah, so.
Well, that's where we're at with the CEP right now. We're working on the CEP prep book. And that's how I studied for the CP exam. I took the study guide and then went through and like made sure I understood everything in it. And so, yeah, and to not have that is, you know, it definitely adds a lot more time it takes to go through and really understand how everything works.
Well, I remember I was super nervous when I took the CBP. Because, because that's all I had, right? And I was just like, okay, well, I've, I've, I've researched all these things, but did I get the right answers? Did I get the answer that matters? Did I get the information that, you know, is relevant? And yeah, so I think it's having, having an actual course, uh, you know, I think makes it life just a lot less stressful for people who want to learn about this and, and get involved.
And I think, I think one of the most important pieces of that was, was the requirement to pay in, in Bitcoin. Because it forced you to go out and create a wallet.
That's still a requirement. Yep, you have to pay using crypto. That's like the first part of the test is, can you use Bitcoin? Can you use Ether or whatever um, you're using? Yeah, for sure. Uh, Janine, you want to jump in and talk a little bit about how you got into Bitcoin?
Yeah, sorry, I was in a different tab. Um, I got into Bitcoin through, mostly through a book called Cypherpunks: Freedom and the Future of the Internet, which I read sometime in 2013. And the reason I read it was more to do with journalism at the time. Um, my distrust and then hatred of banks predated my interest in Bitcoin by a number of years, um, for other reasons. Um, but when I heard about Bitcoin initially, I uh, just thought it was some kind of like, you know, kind of like a Facebook credit kind of thing. Um, I knew very little about it, but then when I read it in this book, I thought, oh, it's something that journalists are using to be able to get funding in a censorship resistant way. Um, and so that very much interested me. And funnily enough, I have since met at least one of the authors of that book. Um, and they have actually, they're, they're kind of a little bit sheepish about it because um, they think it wasn't paranoid enough. And uh, I, at least one of them is, was not happy to hear that I said, that I got into Bitcoin because of the book, because they actually don't like Bitcoin, but Bitcoin is mentioned in the book. Um, and from there, um, I kind of just started reading more about it. Uh, I read more about the financial system, which I, before that, I hadn't really taken much of an interest in money. Um, and then I've been working in Bitcoin since about 2015, 2016.
I think that's a good point in terms of like, those of us that have become fascinated and invested in helping this technology become more mainstream, when it's something that like, we didn't have an interest in. Like you're talking about your interest in money, Janine. This is like something I never, I remember my dad told me in college that I had to take an econ course. He was persistent. And I was like, you can't tell me what to do. So, you know, in that vein, I did not take it. And now I'm like, oh, God, why didn't I listen to him? Um, but so I didn't really get into how it all worked either until I moved into this industry. And the same thing with technology. Um, a lot of the, even like, the definitions behind it's like, I've heard of encryption, but I don't really know anything about it. So it took a while to learn like, these, you know, pieces of information that were very foreign to me to come together for it all to make sense.
Yeah. And I mean, kind of when I, when I say that I didn't have an interest in money, I actually had an interest for a couple of years before that in economics. Um, but I kind of like, when I, when a lot of the economic education or the resources out there, they focus, they focus on the economic system and don't really think about the monetary system or where money comes, like, some of, some of them have more recently. Um, partly because of Bitcoin, because it challenged this idea that the state makes money or that we use commodities as money or anything like that. Um, it's just challenged a lot of those old ideas. Um, but I was interested in economics. I just hadn't really considered like, hey, maybe the problem with the financial crisis had to do with how the money itself is made. Um, so that's what got me thinking about that. Um, at the time that I was reading about Bitcoin, I was already interested um, from just a messaging and application security standpoint about encryption, cryptography. Um, so I already had that. And so that's, that helped me to understand um, how Bitcoin works because I already had that background.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I know, when I first learned about it, it was December of 2013. And um, I don't know what the cost was then, but my boyfriend and I were out meeting some friends. And one of them gave, showed him how to set up a wallet and to, I don't know if he was given a whole Bitcoin or what he was given, but he lost the phone. I mean, it was like, okay, whatever, I'll just do it and no big deal. And of course, we're like, where's that phone? How can we get into it? Which of course, we can't. We've given up on that. But um, it's just interesting to think of like, where, you know, we all came from and how we got here. Especially because a lot of people are wondering about how they can get into the industry. And in what ways the CBP is helpful for getting a job or to, you know, what, what is it used for? And so somebody asked in the YouTube chat, um, what can a normal, what can normal average people do with the BTC or CBP certification? How can I use it to earn income? So does anyone want to talk about, um, you know, how the CBP can help people professionally?
Uh, I can touch on that just from the standpoint of, um, I have required an awful lot of folks who work for me to get it. Uh, the, the CBP is, um, you know, it's kind of a baseline certification, right? It's the, it, it demonstrates that you have a fundamental knowledge, right? You're not necessarily a super brilliant expert. You don't have to know, uh, you know, the math of the cryptography and how it all works. You don't have to know, um, you know, a lot of the super, super technical details and stuff. You have to understand the concepts that, that make Bitcoin work in order to pass the exam. And so it is just a really good baseline, like I said, sort of way of demonstrating that you have that basic knowledge. So we don't, it, it's not just for like, the, the people who are actually dealing with, you know, crypto in a company. Um, our, our marketing staff have CBPs, our product staff have CBPs. Like, we've got, you know, CBPs all over the company in all different areas. Um, because it's just a really useful tool for saying, hey, you can talk to me about how this works and I'm gonna get it.
Yeah, which is sort of why the CBP was created in 2016 because there was no benchmark out there to, for someone to say whether or not they actually understood Bitcoin or not. And there's nothing keeping people from being like, I know all about it. And then in turn, they did not know anything about it. Um, in terms of how it can be used to earn income, so the certificate itself isn't like, how to be a trader or how to make money. That's not our goal with the CBP. Of course, like, having a CBP may, we hope, help you in order to show prospective employers that you understand how the technology works. But at its foundation, this, this C4 organization is really about us working together as a community to educate people about how Bitcoin and other cryptocurrencies work and to make it a safer space. And if that allows people to be better at their jobs and their career and to get jobs, that's awesome. Um, but it really is like, the foundation is being educated and further to be aware to say that, to kind of prove that you actually understand how the technology works and what the purpose of it is. Anybody else want to say anything about that or should I go on to the next question?
No, I think, I think Dirk hit it pretty, pretty well, nail on the head. It's a, it's, it's a, to show that you understand the, you know, the fundamental basics and are not an expert who could code, you know, code up your own node real fast or anything like that. It is, you understand, you know, what the word node means and stuff like that.
Yeah. Um, okay, so the um, next question, somebody was asking about the CCSSA. So I'm gonna do, just to, I'll quickly explain what that is and then we'll talk about what the plan is with it. Actually, Dirk, do you want to explain what it is? Because you are also on that committee. If not, you jump in.
Yeah, so the, the CCSS is the cryptocurrency security standard. And um, it is the, unlike the other standards, which are really focused on uh, knowledge or the other certifications, the CEP and CBP. The CCSS was developed as a set of um, uh, control objectives, basically, for securely and safely operating a business that utilizes cryptocurrency. So it includes things like key management procedures, key revocation procedures, but also um, uh, controls around uh, how much crypto is leveraged and how much you actually store and that sort of thing. So it is a little bit more um, uh, prescriptive sort of program. And the CCSSA is the auditor certification to basically say that somebody is qualified. They, they have the, the knowledge about the CCSS to actually walk into a business and help them evaluate whether or not they are compliant with that, whether they're doing all the things they need to be doing um, in order to be CCSS compliant. Um, and um, you know, as, as more businesses and, and more traditional businesses get involved in taking cryptocurrency, um, there, there's, there's gonna be a real need for that, right? Because uh, you know, we see in the news every day, somebody else lost some, some crypto or, you know, their hard drive is buried in a dump someplace and they didn't have key recovery. And, and you know, when that's personal, that's one thing. When you're a business and that might be somebody else's crypto, then that would be completely up to date, right? So, um, so yeah, the CCSS is designed to do, uh, to help, help businesses uh, operate in a way that, that protects from that sort of thing happening.
There, there's some interesting discussions taking place amongst the exchanges internationally, actually, currently around the chapel rule. Uh, data requirements and security aspects as well, uh, which are, which are a good thing.
Yeah. And the CCSS is nice because it's designed to kind of plug in, right? So if you've got, um, you know, if you have to be compliant with something else, FFIAC rules or, or PCI, because you do credit card rate, it, it, it just specifically addresses the, the issues around crypto and plugs into, you know, whatever other frameworks you're utilizing um, for security as a business.
So the CCSS standard is done. It's out there. The exam itself, the CCSSA, the auditor exam has been completed. It's done. It's been reviewed by the committee. We have a couple CCSSAs already certified. The next step is obviously getting it out and having more people be auditors so that they're able to audit different companies and organizations and really make it more useful, not just for like, internal auditing, but other people to come in and look at it. And so that is something that, the exam is done. We're ready to move forward. We're just kind of doing the final touches on things like um, documentation, things like that, that are taking a little bit more time. And so it will be released though, in the first quarter of 2022. And with that, there'll also be some of the first organizations and companies that have gone through the audit themselves, the process by somebody that's outside their, their company, by a CCSSA. And then there'll be, you'll start to see people putting on their websites and whatnot, what level they're at, level one, two, or three as well. Um, so we're really excited about it. It's gonna be awesome. I know it's been kind of like a long process and there are people that have been waiting for it for a while. But first of all, you know, the technology changes quickly. Second of all, it's extremely important for the standard to do exactly what it says it's going to do. And if it doesn't provide that function of making things more secure, then, you know, it doesn't do what we set out to do. And so um, I think it's a good standard. I think it's a great standard. The exam is good. And so um, hopefully, people are going to be, well, not hopefully, I know they are because we have a lot of interest in getting people um, to be certified as auditors. So that will definitely be coming out in um, 2022. So-
As a, as a consultant who's not a security expert, um, it is a tremendous tool to be able to hand off to somebody to be like, here's a really great set of rules um, that you can follow, that'll at least start you off in the right direction. And now the ability to have someone from outside your company look in uh, and kind of check that box for you is, is even better. So I'm, I'm happy to see this, uh, see this starting to roll out. It's a, it's, it's been, it's been super helpful and it's just gonna get better.
Mm-hmm. Well, I feel like on every level, like, you always need somebody when you're new or even if you understand it, to have you kind of help check your own security practices. But even more so as a company that's potentially even holding funds for others, how important that is. I mean, I remember uh, Janine helped me set up my first hardware wallet. And the anxiety that I felt in doing that and making sure I was going through the right steps. I mean, if I didn't have somebody trusted to help me with it, it would have been a nightmare. Janine probably remembers that I was already kind of panic stricken to make sure I didn't screw anything up. Um, but like, you need people who can help you review what your security practices are and see what the blind spots are, because we all have them and don't recognize it. So, yeah, it's, it's an important part of um, I think it's an important part of the industry and it's already been used. So, yeah, for sure. Okay, I'm gonna go to the next question, which is, could Crowd Q be used to keep CDP certification up to date? As indicated, the certification needs to be renewed every two years. So I'm gonna take the second half of that and then have somebody else jump in. But in terms of the certification being renewed every two years, the certification personally, like, we all have to take the exam to, every two years to continue to be a CBP. The exam itself is reviewed more regularly than every two years because if something big happens, it's obviously going to be added to it. So like, Taproot is not part of the exam yet, but that's something that will likely be somehow um, brought into it in 2022, I'm guessing. I don't know. I don't decide these things. The committee does. Um, but that might be something we look into adding. Um, but does anyone want to talk about how the Crowd Q will be used to keep the certification up to date? How we'll be using it?
Well, I mean, I think that's exactly the idea, right? Is that it allows us uh, to more quickly, because, because we, you know, all have day jobs as well, right? We're not necessarily tracking and following every single thing, right? I mean, there may very well likely, or very likely be, uh, you know, in the future, maybe some more questions around um, uh, like secondary networks, secondary networks on top of, you know, uh, the Bitcoin blockchain and stuff like Lightning and stuff like that, right? And maybe that'll be its own certification, but maybe there will be elements of that, that, you know, that get covered in, in the CBP as well. So, yeah, as, as the, the world continues to evolve, the whole goal and the whole idea of, of having Crowd Q is getting enough outside input that we're actually, yeah, when you take the, when two years later, you take the exam, it's not, it should not be the exact same pool of questions that you took the first time, right? There's, there's always going to be the basics, right? Um, but that, uh, but that it is also keeping up with what's going on in the industry.
Yes, exactly. Okay, so for the last fifteen minutes, I'd love for us to do some exam prep with people who are watching, listening, that want to become CBPs and aren't there yet. Um, so we all started as not being CBPs as well. And so we worked our way up to get there and by just learning about the material, which it can feel daunting at first, but um, the best way to do it is just to start. So let's go over a few questions and um, start to explain what the answers are. So, does anybody know what the smallest unit of Bitcoin is called? Is it a millibit? In your head at home, be thinking. Okay, now who wants to tell the answer from the team? It's not. We all know this. No, it's not. It's the Satoshi. Um, so if you hear the phrase like, SATs, or I think one of the popular kind of things people say is stacking SATs, um, basically Satoshis are SATs and that is the smallest unit. Um, okay, let's do another one. Why is it best practice to give a new Bitcoin address for every transaction instead of reusing an address? So why do we recommend creating a new address for every single transaction? And by we, I mean, industry best practice. Think about it. Janine, you want to handle this?
Yeah, um, I can't remember how we phrased it in the actual exam, but the answer is that it's for privacy reasons. It's, uh, if you look at the Bitcoin white paper, uh, there's a section on privacy. And one of the recommendations for uh, maintaining your privacy in Bitcoin is to not reuse addresses because if you use, if you create multiple transactions um, to or from an address, then anyone looking at that address can see, okay, you're, all of this money that's going in or out of this address is probably controlled by the same person, um, which can expose, you know, how much money you have or how much you're sending and makes it easier to follow your coins. That's the long answer.
It's a good answer.
The perfect answer.
Yeah. Okay, let's talk about confirmations. So, how many confirmations are recommended before it's considered spendable? Dun, 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 dun. No, I'm sorry, that's not gonna help, is it?
I think I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get this wrong, but um, something in the back of my head thinking back says eight, but more recently, I think it's less than that.
Go with six.
Yes, six.
And of course, and of course, the real answer to that is, it's relative to what you're doing, right? If you're buying a copy, right? You don't need six transactions to confirm three. And not that you would be doing $3 in transactions at this point, right? But, um, but you know, looking at uh, any blockchain, right? It's, it's how- It's, it's how, how much, the, the number of confirmations is really asking the question, how hard is it for somebody else to redo that block of the blockchain? And so each, each new block that you add on makes it harder. And if you're worried about losing $3, it's just like swiping your credit card, right? At Burger King, they don't ask for your signature, right? Because it's a $10 transaction and if it's fraudulent, they're just gonna write it off. If it, you know, if you're buying a car, they want, uh, they want proof that you actually have that money in the bank, right? So, um.
Yeah, it's definitely relative to what makes sense for the person who's both spending it and the person who's receiving it. And I think also it's like if somebody, it, it also depends like, yeah, are you Burger King? And $10 is $10 and you make so much, it doesn't matter? Or is $10 a lot of money and you need to make sure that that's gone through? I think it definitely depends on, um.
So what's the correct answer?
But if you're taking the exam, the correct answer is six. And the reason for that is because at six transactions, it's mathematically infeasible for somebody to go back and change the, change the, the sixth block back.
Yes, thank you for clarifying. Um, okay.
Person and there's the hardcore crypto there, they're about the same.
I apologize in advance, but I have to drop off in a couple of minutes. I have a travel rule, um, solution call coming up.
That's okay. Thank you for joining us, Peter. Um, let's do a few more questions and then I'm gonna share, um, a code with everyone for some, um, free resources. Um, so, okay, we also in the exam talk about digital signatures. Um, Dirk, will you explain what a digital signature is and how it works?
But we only have eight minutes left.
Explain.
So a dig, I mean, a digital signature is basically when you use a cryptographic private key, which means it's the key that only you know to sign a message, not necessarily to encrypt it so that it can't be read, but to sign the message in such a way that it can only have come from you. And it's really important, um, a really important part of blockchain transactions. Because if I send a transaction to the blockchain that says, hey, give Rodney, you know, five Bitcoin, you wanna know that it actually came from me, right? That I'm actually the one saying to, to move five of my Bitcoin over to Rod. I don't have Bitcoin sitting around for you, Rodney, I'm sorry. But, um, but to move my Bitcoin over to Rodney. And so the, the digital signature is a mathematical way of proving that I would be the only person who could have sent that message.
Dirk, just out of curiosity, are those keys, um, are they symmetrical or are they asymmetrical?
They are asymmetrical. Um, because you, in order, the way that you prove that it came from me is by using my public key. If I sign something with my private key, you use my public key to be able to prove that that was signed with the private key.
So it would be illogical to require the same keys to be on both sides of every transaction then?
Yep, wouldn't work.
Got it.
Yeah, I think that when I first started, the difference between, um, asymmetric and symmetric cryptography was very confusing. And then once I realized it's actually not that confusing, it's just like stepping into something new. Everything feels confusing. Um, but then after a while, it's like, okay, I do get this, this makes a lot of sense, how it all works. Um, yeah. So we've got a couple minutes left. And one of the questions that we just got in the chat was how someone can study for the exam? What, what do you do to make sure that you have resources that are credible, valid? Um, there are a bunch of different resources out there. Um, it is hard to know where to look, but I will say that in the last few years, there have been more and more free resources that are more credible. So there are a lot of options out there. Um, one of our board members, Andreas Antonopoulos, he has a lot, he has a free intro to Bitcoin and open blockchains workshop on his site, um, antonop.com. And we have that same video, it's not a course, but the same video is on our YouTube, um, channel. So you can find that talk from our 2019 conference there. There's also a bunch of different talks on YouTube. So Dirk has one on there where he talks about cryptography. Rodney, what was your course on? I'm blanking.
Uh, AML, um, fraud and crypto.
Okay, um, and then Janine, yours was on privacy at the conference. Um, so there's a ton of other videos from the conference, but also, um, there is, like I said, other free content out there. Just, you know, make sure that what you're looking at, you're, you're sure it's correct. So like go through and analyze it, don't just like take somebody's word for it on Reddit. Um, we also have our free study guide online and then we have a prep book as well that you can buy. And then I also really, really want the people who came here today to be able to get your certificate and to take the course. So I'm going to share here in the chat, a, um, coupon code for the course. So you can, this is, like I said, we've got the course in two different places right now. So we also have it on Thinkific and you can use the coupon code I'm putting right here. It's C O L, not L O L. And that I actually made for somebody else. And the reason, this is ridiculous, it has nothing to do with the CBP, but the person that I created that for is trying to get a movement going where people say C O L instead of L O L, because he thinks that most people chuckle instead of laugh out loud. So that we should be saying C O L. So I made that as a joke for him and, um, there's seven coupon codes left. And so just thought we would keep it going, maybe it'll spread the word. Um, but so you can use that coupon code on Thinkific to take the course for free. If you have any feedback, you can share it at the end of the course or you can also always send us an email at info@cryptoconsortium.org. We really, really value our community as part of making everything we have better. It, nothing good evolves in a vacuum, which is why we need a committee, which is why we're working for, um, the community to be more involved in 2022. And then also, I wanna give you guys a 50% off coupon code for the, I'm sorry, an 100% coupon code for the exam. And then, um, if you take it and pass, you'll pay for the application fee side of it, which is basically just us processing it and printing it and shipping it out to you. Um, but the exam itself is going to be free if you use, I'm putting it in the chat. The coupon code is December C B P. And you should use it, um, you can sign up and it will be there when you come back to it to take the exam later. So it's not going to, the exam doesn't go anywhere, but the coupon does. The coupon expires, so go in, get the, get enrolled and then it'll sit on your, um, you know, account on C4 until you're ready to take the exam when you're done with the course. Um, does anybody else have any more questions or anything that we didn't answer? Or anyone from the committee that wants to say something?
The only other thing I was just gonna throw out there is, um, we've mentioned several times, um, Andreas's book. Um, I'm a big fan of actually holding the book in my hand, it's a book worth owning, um, uh, whether it's Mastering Bitcoin or Ethereum or whatever, but from a free resource perspective, yep. Um, those are, his books are also available on, on GitHub, right? For, for free. So the information from those books is available, you can search it, you can, you know, research things in it, but he's always made them available on GitHub.
I think, uh, education is, you know, from, from the days when most of us joined, um, there weren't very many educators out there and most of the information that you found was fairly accurate because there was only a handful of people putting information out there. So as long as you could find it, it was reasonably trustworthy. Um, today with, with so many different broad projects, so many different blockchains, um, the amount of YouTube channels out there that aren't education, they're just trade analysis. Um, it's a little trickier to find good quality information. And so, um, you know, having, having someone on the board, like, you know, Andreas, who's made that kind of his sole focus, um, really, like, shows the value of the training that is being provided here and that it is a nonprofit organization. It's not meant to make a million dollars, it's meant to educate a million people. And so thank you, Jessica, for, for being, you know, our leader in that, uh, the rest of the team for being a, a part of that and, you know, doing what needs to be done to get the information out to the people that want it.
Yeah, I think it's really cool how so many people who are in the industry are willing to share their knowledge for free, just to put that out there so more people not only understand about the technology, but also understand how to be safe. And this just popped in my head a moment ago. So, um, I wanted to bring it up because Janine has a free newsletter that she sends out every month about Bitcoin and privacy in general, like online privacy, um, and how to be safe. Janine, do you want to explain that real quick? Because I think that in terms of there being so many things out there to learn about, like it's like there's constantly something else new, um, and we all can't keep up with it. So newsletters like yours that kind of explain like what you need to know about whatever topic, I personally think are really, well, obviously I think it's valuable because I get the newsletter.
Yeah, I started, uh, a Bitcoin privacy newsletter, um, in, uh, last summer, in June, and, um, it's still going, although I'm a bit behind because, uh, things have been a bit crazy the last two months. Um, but yeah, I do normally put, uh, one out each month. And it, uh, the, you know, the overarching focus is Bitcoin privacy, but that can be, um, ways to use Bitcoin privates, uh, privately, which can include things that are not directly related to Bitcoin that may impact Bitcoin users. Um, and, uh, I just started it because, um, I wanted to basically publish the things that I was already researching. Um, so it wasn't really a lot of additional work to just put it into a newsletter. Um, and what I also didn't expect is that I got a grant from the Human Rights Foundation earlier this year, um, because they started a dove fund, um, last year to fund Bitcoin development that focused on privacy and decentralization and censorship resistance from the perspective of, um, using those tools to protect human rights or have people who are fighting for human rights to use Bitcoin. Um, and I was really surprised by that because I didn't even apply. Uh, so that was really great, um, that it got that attention and that the Human Rights Foundation, um, uh, unlike a lot of organizations who probably should also be putting Bitcoin out there, um, they do recognize its value and so I was, um, excited about that. And yeah, I've gotten a great response from the newsletter so far.
Yeah, I personally find it helpful. Um, so anyways, if anybody has feedback comments you wanna reach out to us, we're obviously on Twitter and other social media, you can always contact us there or you can send us emails at info@cryptoconsortium.org. We're a friendly bunch, we like to hear feedback. Um, a lot of what we do, since we're a nonprofit, happens with volunteers and kind of like in our, in our group and then asking the community for help. So we do rely on you all for feedback. Um, it just popped in my head, Rodney, when you and I were coming up with some of the graphics for the course and like, I'm sitting here, you're sitting where you are and we're like coming up with all these wild ideas to try to make sure that we can explain it and then we toned it down and, you know, got it out. But it really like, it really takes a lot of different people to come together to make sense of it. And then there's ideas we came up with that other people in the committee were like, oh, this is like a little too weird. Which, okay, fine, we're both weird, so we needed, you know, to be rein back in. But really, anybody who sees the course, who sees the book, who sees our videos and has feedback, we welcome it because we recognize that we can only improve if we have, you know, a bunch of people that are assisting us in that goal. So, um, with that, thank you all for joining us, both on the live stream and, um, committee members. I appreciate you being here and, um, we'll see you in 2022 for more fun and we'll do more trivia and, um, more of these type of kind of town hall office hours for people to ask us questions.
And have a great crypto mess.
Yes, oh, I like it, crypto mess.
Oh, Josh, Rodney, uh, what was that about, things that are too strange? Welcome to the club.
All right, take care everyone, thank you.
Bye everyone.
Bye.